Can everybody mute just because we're just talking? Thank you.
Can everybody see the memo on the screen?
All good.
Good, okay. So this is the financial report through April. So this financial report does indicate that the schools will be closed for the entire school year as the, per the governor's announcement on May 5th. So we are forecasting a year end balance of $923,097, which is about $43,000 more than the previous month, which is 0.93% of the budget. The general education RCs forecast a current surplus of $930,984, while the special education RCs forecast a negative variance of $7,887. Just the highlights of the RCs real quick. At Darian High School RC1, we do have salary savings of a little over $7,600. Again, carrying forward from the previous month, student intern savings of about $600. Substitute savings of a little over $37,000. This is due to the closure. We did include a packet of some of the operating accounts, which have yielded some savings items, such as consumables, printing and repairs and textbooks. For RC1, that's a little over $35,000. Moving to RC2, again, we still have salary savings of $4,118. And similar to the other RCs, we have operating accounts surplus of $6,887. And those again are categories such as teaching supplies and travel expenses due to the closure. Moving to RC3, Middlesex, we do have salary savings of $7,749. Again, we are carrying a favorable balance in student interns for $600. Substitutes does show a favorable balance of $29,049, again, due to the closure. And then again, some of those accounts like textbooks, consumables, printing, repairs, balance of just under $38,000. Moving to Hindley, salary savings of $9,146. Again, we are carrying forward the balance of, favorable balance for student interns of $600. And then again, similar to the other RCs, favorable balance in some of the accounts, such as textbooks, consumables, printing and repairs for $13,074. Moving to RC7 Homes, we again are carrying salary savings for a leave of absence of $37,673. We do have salary savings of $2,042 due to turnover. We are again carrying over intern savings of $7,800. Some small salary savings in teacher aid and curriculum supervision. And then again, some small savings in things like textbooks, consumables, printing and repairs of $2,400. Moving to Oxbridge, again, carrying forward a favorable balance from the previous month of student interns of $600. Some salary savings of $206 for teacher aides. And then again, some savings associated with textbooks, consumables, printing, repairs of $4,700. Moving to Royal, we are again carrying over salary savings of $6,862 due to staff turnover. We have salary savings of $1,300 in curriculum supervision. Substitutes is showing a favorable balance of $3,338. And again, those other smaller accounts, such as textbooks, consumables, printing and repairs, estimated budget savings of just over $12,000 at Royal. The Tokenique, again, carrying over salary savings of $4,288. We are projecting substitute savings at Tokenique of $4,388 due to the closure. And then again, some of those smaller accounts like textbooks, consumables, printing and repairs, savings of a little over $20,000. Moving to RC11 Athletics, we are estimating $2,354 for custodial overtime due to the buildings being closed for IMCA. Due to the closure of the weight room, a little bit of savings there as well, a little over $4,000. Stipends are showing a savings of just over $22,000 as some sports are not being done virtually for the spring season. This is, an example would be rugby as one example. Intramurals are showing a savings of just over $29,000. We do have savings for athletic transportation, since there's not a spring season, of a little over $110,000. Forecasting savings for officials of $48,000, again, because we do not have a spring season. And then some of those smaller accounts, such as consumables and training supplies and equipment, about $29,000 as well. Moving to RC12, we did suspend regular service for city carding during the closure, and that has resulted in savings of $12,450, that is the garbage contract. We have also suspended services for Lionheart Cleaning Services, regular services. So that is about $47,000 in savings. There are no, currently no professional meetings due to the closure. So that is a savings of a little over $2,900. We did have a light snow season this year, so we do have savings of $4,268 as well there. We are anticipating a shortfall in revenue for field and building rentals as the facilities are closed. That's a shortfall of $102,000. Moving on to RC13 Music, a little bit of salary savings of $1,179 due to the closure, again, areas like textbooks, consumables, printing and repairs, $6,616. And then spring transportation for music concerts, projecting a savings of a little over $4,200. Moving to RC14 Art, those accounts, again, classroom reference, periodicals, teaching supplies are generating a savings of $11,0950. Moving to RC15 Technology, small amount of savings in the copy center, given that it is currently closed. We do have a projected deficit in software of $20,371. This was for the Zoom software that we referenced at the last meeting. This is one of the transfers Dr. Adley approved for the month of April. And then staff development, a surplus of a little over $5,300. This is due to professional development opportunities being canceled due to the closure. Moving to RC16 Administration, consulting services show a positive variance of $5,060. We were able to secure a transportation study that was $5,000 less than anticipated. And then due to the closure, again, some of those areas, such as professional meetings and printing, are yielding budgetary savings of just over $16,000. In RC17 Health, substitutes are yielding a savings of $10,454. And again, that is due to the closure. And then some of those smaller accounts, savings of $1,680. In RC18 Personnel, budget control again remains untouched for savings of $263,360. Due to the closure, substitutes for professional development are yielding a savings of $19,524. And then again, in some of those other accounts, such as recruitment, travel and staff development, savings of $29,442. This is savings again from career fairs and travel and professional development that's no longer being offered due to the closure. In RC19 Curriculum, we do have salary savings that we're carrying forward, again, of $1,100 due to staff turnover in a secretary position. Salary savings of a little over $4,400 that we're carrying over from previous months. And then again, some of the smaller accounts yielding savings of $31,334. And this includes things like travel, field trips and materials. In RC20 Finance, auditing services is a favorable balance of $184. That expense has been paid in its final. And then due to the closure, a small amount of savings of $771. And then again, is for things like travel and professional development. In RC21, small amount of savings in areas like memberships and professional development of a little over $1,800. In RC22 Tech Ed, again, due to the closure, some of those smaller accounts like teaching supplies, periodicals and repairs of savings over, a little over $9,000. In RC23 Continuing Education and Summer School, again, the Adult Ed Contracted Service has a positive forecast of $5,000. This was a result of four or less adults participating in the Adult Ed program. Due to the closure, again, we're not anticipating purchasing some of the typical materials and mailing expenses and office supplies. And so that's a cumulative savings of just over $46,000. Due to the closure, we are anticipating having a deficit of $428,132 in summer school revenue. If summer school is to happen, it can't happen until July, per the governor's recommendation. But we are seeing a significant drop in the individuals who are enrolling in summer school, and we do not know whether it'll be virtual or in person or not happening at all. Moving forward to RC24 Special Education, the Assistant Director of Special Education has a positive forecast of $6,720. This is salary savings from a transition to a new assistant director in a gap between the time in which it was vacated and then filled. Forecasted savings in curriculum supervision of $30,589. The individual who was in that account is now in the Assistant Director of Special Education account. Substitute savings of $33,602. And again, that is due to the closure. We are forecasting savings of a little over $65,000 in homebound tutoring. And again, that is due to the closure. Forecasting for teacher salary savings of $27,000. We are utilizing a little bit more in contracted services for physical therapy. So we do have a negative variance of $15,675. And this is the second transfer that the superintendent approved for the month of April. Similar to previous months, we do have salary savings in the psychology line due to a turnover late in the year of $2,600. The forecast for the SES facilitator line item, again, is a little bit of a savings of $1970. The secretary line item is a savings of $1,500 due to a late year turnover as well, similar to the previous months. We do have teacher aid savings of $41,626. The transportation driver position has a positive variance of $13,046 due to resignation. And we are holding off on filling that, given the closure. The nursing line item has a positive variance of $18,127 due to retirement. And again, we are looking to hold that position until the next school year due to the closure. We are also projecting some savings in some of the smaller line items, like general teaching supplies, travel and consumables. That's a little over $9,000. Governor LaVant did issue Executive Order 7R, which requires districts to continue to pay bus transportation. The out-of-district negotiated rate for Darian is 81.2%. That is leaving a savings of a little over $25,000. Tuition public schools is a positive variance of $37,025. And that's just due to a change in placements. We are currently forecasting the tuition to be held flat as we work with our special ed providers to find out if there's any reductions available due to the closure there as well. The biggest change from this month to last month is we did receive our final reimbursement for excess cost. So that money has been received as of last week, and we received $2,566,258. That is $284,840 less than budget. The entitlement cap was revised to 70.89% from the previously announced 74.8%. So that shift in the entitlement cap did result in about $100,000 less than we originally anticipating. If we go to RC25, we have some savings for the late buses. School is closed. We are forecasting some savings in diesel fuel as school is closed, a little over $19,000. Forecast for fuel slash natural gas is about a positive $37,000. Water is a positive forecast of $4,946. We are seeing anticipated electricity savings, since the buildings were dormant for a period. We would probably expect that to tick up a little bit, as we do have all the maintenance and custodial workers in doing routine maintenance and cleaning. So we are obviously turning the lights on for a longer period of time. Sewer service is forecasting a favorable balance of a little over $3,900. And then looking over into health insurance, due to the closure, the food service fund has no sales to support its expenditures. So we did make that recommendation to reclassify the payroll tax into the operating budget. So this is an overage of about $11,941. It doesn't represent the full amount of the adjustment, because it does appear that we will have some savings in the payroll tax account due to some turnover during the year. Moving forward to health insurance, we are anticipating savings of about $244,000 due to some census changes from when the budget was created to what we currently have now. We have about 18 less people on insurance than was on the census when the budget was created over a year ago. We are anticipating about $90,000 for non-certified early retirement incentive. And then currently longevity payments are under budget by about $75,000. And then again, we've received Medicaid reimbursement revenue of a little over $5,000. And then moving to RC26, the Early Learning Program, we do have a vacancy in the teacher aid line item that we are holding vacant. So that's salary savings of $29,000. Substitute savings of $2,200. And again, that is due to the closure. And then again, some smaller line item savings, such as teaching supplies and consumables, which is budgetary savings of about $5,800. ELP tuition, again, is forecasted at a negative variance of $46,673. We had 47 paying students this year compared to 62 in the previous year. So that is the direct result of the lower forecasted of ELP tuition revenue. I can quickly go through the PowerPoint, which highlights really what we went over. Again, forecasted savings of...
Rich, before you go through the PowerPoint, I just want to see if anyone has any questions, because I know John has a work thing, so I want to make sure he has time to ask some questions. So, go ahead, John.
Sorry, in an update my work call, I was able to push it off, so no rush on my part. Just one question, Rich. The leave bus that was implemented, you know, intra-year at the high school, were there any adjustments there? Did I miss it?
There is. So there's a savings of a little over 4,000, which really represents the months of the closure.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Hey, Rich, it's Duke. Is the Lionheart Cleaning savings, is that specific to the outsourced cleaning up at the high school?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, this is Mike Burke. Thanks for the report. When I look over these savings, it's, you know, it's actually kind of sad. I'm kind of saddened to hear this report, because it evidences a school system in stasis. And I hope that we can be moving again soon. But my specific question is, in RC Athletics, where you wrote that stipends are showing a savings of $22,540 as some sports cannot be done virtually. My question is, are any sports being done virtually?
There are. The majority of spring sports were decided to work virtually, so the coaches are working with students after the regular session of high school gets out. But Chris felt that there were a few sports, such as rugby as an example, that really wouldn't work in a virtual basis.
Thank you.
Sure.
Rich, this is Jill.
Go ahead, Jill.
If you're on the same thing, mine's a separate question.
Oh, just to that point, Rich, to Michael's question, so there are some sports kind of being done virtually where the stipends are being paid?
Correct.
Okay. Could we just at some point in time have a list of what that is?
Sure.
Thank you.
We can, but the coaches actually submit information, regular information to the athletic director who tracks it.
So there's monitoring going on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Rich, can you go back to summer school and just talk more slowly through how you want to book the revenue versus what we've done traditionally? I think that's one we should all be prepared to have a conversation with the Board of Finance about, since they've promised to cover lost revenue.
Sure. So typically, you want to record revenue in the, for the period of summer school, when summer school is actually occurring. Really, what's been happening in the past is they've been booking the revenue as they've received it. So if people are putting down deposits or registering for their students, let's say now, for next summer school, the practice has been to record that revenue currently as opposed to booking it as prepaid revenue and then subsequently releasing it in the following school year, so it reflects the actual summer school program. The preferred method would be to record the revenue for the program in the year that it's occurring. So if parents are putting down deposits or registering their children for summer school for next year, we should record that revenue for next year. One of the things we are seeing is there's not a lot of people registering currently for summer school, given what is going on. When the announcement that school was going to be closed for the year, we actually saw a significant amount of parents withdraw completely from summer school, assuming that it was going to be canceled, or if it was going to be virtually, they just were not interested in a program like that. So we're probably at about 25% of registrations compared to what we normally would be. So if we have no summer school at all, the revenue for next year would be zero. If we have some type of hybrid program, where either we have a little bit in person or virtually, the expectation is, because the enrollment is low, it would be less, but have a little bit of revenue to book next year. Or if it's not a hybrid and it's virtual only, we would probably have a little bit, even less than that hybrid version, but we would have a little bit of revenue and obviously some expenses to go along with it.
Great. So from a financial perspective, I thank you. I agree with booking the revenue in the way that you described. When we talk to the board as a whole, I think, let's be, if you don't mind spending some time going through that, so that the board is clear, but that's a change in practice.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, Rich, I just wanted to go back to really RC1, RC3 and RC5. I went and compared last month's financial overview to this month's financial overview, and it seems like the surplus for those RCs that we expected from school closures has come down. So could you touch upon why those numbers have come down?
Sure. So at the March meeting, we did make a recommendation to transfer some of those savings to cover some items. For example, we did make a recommendation to start shifting some food service expenses out of the food service fund to the operating budget. Part of that is because the food service operations have no revenue occurring anymore, because we're obviously not selling lunches. We are doing grab and go, and we are required to continue to pay our employees. So as we have expenditures, no revenue, the fund is going to essentially go bankrupt. So the recommendation at the March financial report was to move expenses, such as the SEDEXO consulting contract for the Food Service Director, the point-of-sale system, some health insurance expenses. So we did make a recommendation to use some of the salary savings from RC1 and RC3 for that. And then one of the other transfers that was approved at the March meeting was the $25,000 for the transportation consultant, and that was taken from RC1.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. My other question was, I just wanted to go back to excess costs for a second. So I just want to be clear that we originally had, we thought we were going to get 74.8%. That was last month's estimate. And then when, in actuality, when it came in, we got 70.89% as entitlement cap, correct?
Correct. So in February, the state did indicate that the entitlement cap would be 74.8%. And that was around the time when they made the February payment. So excess cost is received in two payments, one in February and one in May. And then the May one is based on every district's filing of the March 1 filing. And based on that, they did reduce the entitlement cap, the reimbursement to districts, down to 70.89.
Okay. So that's something that stuck out to me, because I know, confirm, please, we budgeted 75% for fiscal year '21. So I guess that's something I should really keep an eye on, because it seems like that number is creeping back, is continually to creep back down. So I think it could even be below 70% at this rate.
Correct. So I think, looking at next year's, we were aggressive in the reimbursement rate at 75%. The other items that we're going to have to consider is if there is no ESY, and it's a virtual ESY, some claimable expenditures, for example, are transportation services. If we don't have an in-person ESY, it won't be in-person transportation, and those would be claimable expenditures we wouldn't be able to submit for.
Right. So that'll impact what we can file, and therefore will impact what we get reimbursed by the state.
Correct.
It could cause that number to come down even further. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we touched on that. It seems to be a...
Rich, on, to that point, Deb and Rich, specifically on the transportation, from what I read yesterday, please correct me if I'm wrong, that they're really asking that families provide transportation if at all possible. So even if we have transportation that's listed on IEPs, I am expecting, I would imagine, that many families may choose not to use it based on the recommendations about, you know, safe social distancing, et cetera. So is, I would think that we're going to see a reduction in that line item, even if ESY is held in person. Is that also your understanding?
So the recommendation, if we do have an in-person ESY and transportation is offered, is to really space out the students. It's one per every other row. It's really almost 25% capacity of the buses. So there's a potential that we would actually need more buses, considering we wouldn't actually be able to put more than one kid per seat, or they wouldn't be able to sit right next to each other. But I think as of right now, we don't know whether or not we'll have an in-person ESY or a virtual ESY.
Okay, thank you. It's a bit beyond the scope of this particular conversation, but from what I read in there for a future conversation, my understanding, there was a line that we are asking guardians to provide transportation if they can. So I'm not sure what that means and what the enforcement mechanism is, but at a future date, if we can...
That sort of goes beyond what we do here at this committee level, but that's definitely a conversation for the full board.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
So ministry, we're obviously looking at implications.
Right. There were a lot of things detailed in that that will have cost implications going forward for schooling. Before we go on to this PowerPoint, does anyone have any other questions on the RCs? On the RC overview? I guess at this point, I just to touch on the summer school, you're saying we're at 25% registration. Are you seeing, I guess maybe on Tuesday, given the directive that we got from the state, perhaps we could just be prepared to update that, if there's any update to that?
Sure. Yeah, as of last week, enrollment was about 25% of what it typically is. We've seen more and more parents asked to withdraw. If it ends up being that we have summer school, or we have a virtual summer school, there's a possibility that enrollments could tick up, or they could continue to dwindle if parents aren't necessarily looking for a virtual option, given they've had virtual schooling for the last few months. So it really depends on how enrollment shakes out if we have a summer school.
Thank you. You want to go over the PowerPoint, Rich?
Sure. Can everybody see the screen?
Got it.
As we mentioned, we are showing a positive forecast of $923,097, or 0.93%. The general education RCs are a surplus of $930,000, while the special education RCs are a slight deficit of $7,800. Salary portion of the forecast is a positive $775,000. There are salary savings of $252,000, total substitute savings of $141,000. Budget control again remains untouched at $263,000, student interns at $10,000. Athletics, $58,000, and then homebound tutoring as well. And then operating, we did provide a listing of what those operating, various operating accounts are, but the things like consumables and teaching supplies, books, repairs, things like that, cumulative balance of $344,622. Facility services, which is really the Lionheart contract and city carding contract, positive $68,000. Officials, $48,000. Transportation, $140,000. The software, again, is a negative due to the Zoom software. And then torching, a positive $37,000. So operating is a positive $618,584. The fixed regular transportation, a positive $24,000. Insurance, $227,000. Payroll taxes, again, we're forecasting right now at a negative amount due to the food service adjustment. And then utilities, which is heating oil, electricity, water, all those accounts are positive $141,000. So in total, fixed is a positive $380,425. Equipment is rather minor, but the various RCs, a positive $5,800. Revenue is really where the greatest shortfall is. So again, excess cost came in under budget by $184,820. The field and building rental revenue of $102,000 will be short, and this is again due to the closure. Summer school revenue of $428,000, ELP tuition of $46,000, and then to the positive Medicaid reimbursement of $5,300. So all told, revenue would be down about $56,000. There were two transfers that Dr. Adley approved. First would be for the Zoom software. That was mentioned at the previous meeting, but it was purchased in April. And then contracted physical therapy for $15,675.
Thanks. Before we move on to have more of a discussion on the transfers, I just, I wanted to go through the memo that you sent around that details the expense savings and additional expenses. I just had some questions, because I compared it to last month's review, and some numbers have changed. So I was hoping you could just let us know why. And the ones that I'll highlight is with the expenses, the number has gone up significantly for custodial overtime. So maybe, and then the other one that I was looking at was transportation, and you presented it differently last month. So I tried to consolidate all the transportation savings, and it seems like that number has come down. So those are the things I was hoping you could touch on.
So in terms of custodial overtime, we did have some timesheets that were not submitted on time for that first few weeks of when school was closed and we started sanitizing the buildings. We also had a need for having some staff in to do a little extra cleaning when we allowed teachers to come in and get some items. So that did add a little bit of extra overtime. And then in terms of the transportation, the previous memo talked about having the home-to-school transportation... home-to-school transportation and in-district transportation for first student at 95%, which was the negotiated rate. And at the last board meeting, we did talk about trying to renegotiate the first student contract to have a flat rate next year and then push out all the rates going forward. We do have an agreement with first student to do that. So I did take that portion out of the forecasted savings.
Okay, so they did agree to that, so we're going to...
Yep, so right now, we're just having the amendment to the contract drawn up by shipment in Goodwin, but we did get a confirmation from first student that they were agreeable to those terms.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Excellent. Thanks, Rich. Does anyone else have any questions?
Duke, nice work, nice work on that. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. No, you're good.
Yeah.
Hey, Rich, Rich, you...
I'm going to interrupt you, but unfortunately, just a point of order, you're not a member of the finance committee, so unfortunately, you can't comment right now, but if you have something, maybe during public comments after we review the transfers, that would be great. Thanks. Sorry about that. So do you want to go over the PowerPoint, or does anyone else have any questions on the memo? Any committee members?
Deb, which memo are you on?
Um, so it was included in our package.
I think it is this, if you can see on the screen, I think it's this one.
This one. Thank you very much.
Okay, so why don't you go ahead and just give us a quick overview of the, we did the PowerPoint, so I guess we can move on to, should we just move on to transfers then, the next item number? Agenda number?
Yep. So again, there's just the two transfers. The first one was for the Zoom enhanced software services. We did reference that at the last meeting, but it was a purchase in April, so it's reflected here. And then a small amount of money for, or $15,000 for contracted PT for special education services during the closure.
Does anyone have any questions on the transfers?
Again, these are normally transfers that would be done by the board, but yeah...
Right, so with the temporary powers the superintendent has, he can initiate these transfers without formal board approval, so... Okay, so if there are no questions, we can move to public comment. Duke, if there's some questions or comments you have, we'd love to hear them. You're there. Duke. I guess we lost Duke. Oh, I can't hear you, Tara. You're muted.
Tara, you muted?
You look muted.
You look muted on our side.
Okay. Okay. So with that, I'm going to adjourn our meeting.
I got a question, actually.
Oh, okay.
I think because of technical difficulty, so I'm asking for Ms. Janine. I was going to ask if Rich had a back-of-the-napkin idea where we'd be tracking if we had a normal school year.
I think we would likely be closer to around $300,000 to the positive. Those various operating accounts that we referenced that had about $350,000 of savings, we wouldn't obviously have. Some of the savings associated with like out-of-district transportation, we wouldn't really have. We obviously wouldn't have suspended the trash removal contract or the Lionheart contract, and so all of those would play a role, and I think we would probably be in that $300 to the $400,000 range.
Great, thanks, Rich.
Okay, great. Thanks for relaying that. If that's all, then I'm going to move to adjourn the meeting, and thank you all very much for attending.
See anybody else? Have a good day, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks.